Good evening. This is the scheduled Town of Dartmouth Planning Board meeting for September 29th, 2025. This meeting is being recorded. At this point in time, I'd like to start the meeting with a roll call vote. Margaret Sweet.
Here.
Lori Miller.
Here.
Kevin Estes.
Here.
Hila Yorozan.
Here.
Nick Cyclopatis.
Here.
Good evening, everyone. Before we begin, as a board, along with Dan and Ross, I just want to share with everybody that the nature of tonight's meeting and the agenda is workshop-based. It is a workshop designed for us to collaborate with both our planning director and assistant and share with all of you the thoughts, if you would, that are going on behind the scenes as to planning as it relates to housing, units, affordable, numbers, quotas, and zoning, and so on. So at this point in time, I think it's fair to let you chime in, correct?
Sure.
Bring us up to speed, the initial scope of the meeting.
So Ross and I put together a few things just as reference points for all the board members that I think would be helpful to get started. One being the survey that we put out earlier this year for the Housing Production Plan. I think it's good to reference a few of these items as no matter what we decide as a planning board, it's going to go through town meeting, so we need to have the support of the citizens of town. So one thing to kind of keep an eye on, typical town meeting for zoning, regulation change, new zoning regs, you need a two-thirds vote. So you're looking at this, you're thinking, we want to be somewhere around 67 percent, so at least we're in the ballpark. You know, we can have public outreach if we're close to try to explain our thoughts on things. If we are going to do something with an affordable component, the state allows a simple majority. So looking through these things, things that are over 50 percent, like you see a few of these survey results are up near 60 percent that have that affordable component to it. So that's definitely something I think would be appropriate to look at as options as we start discussing different views. I also, I had sent this out earlier in the year, just when we had talked about master plan implementation. So this is just a section on land use and housing. This outlines the goals that are relative to the planning board's purview. So you can, we can have these as references because obviously we want to make sure whatever we come up with is in sync with the master plan that was established. So those are, those are a few of the things we have here. We included the priority list items kind of on this sheet where you could kind of take notes, kind of go through those things, give everybody a chance to offer their opinions. We have, I think most of you have seen the maps that Ross and I have done. We have a little bit bigger blown-up version of the Route 6 corridor. We have another one that goes up Farns Corner a little bit. We have an overall zoning map for the town, and then we have a plan that doesn't show any zoning, just the streets if we want to just kind of gauge. If we're looking at overlays or zoning things, that's what we didn't get, we didn't get the colored pencils. If we want to kind of rough out areas people are looking at, we were thinking, you know, if everybody wants to have a different color, you can kind of, you know, outline and see what overlays, what makes sense that everybody's kind of in agreement on, so I think that would be helpful. We also got the town's infrastructure maps. We have the sewer master plan as well as for municipal water. So we have a few resources here. My thought process was kind of go through some of this information. Board members can offer their opinions, kind of see if we can come to some agreements on what everybody's looking for. I know we've thrown out a lot of terms over the past six, eight months or so, and then at that point, if we have a few things that we kind of narrow it down to, Ross and I can then do a deeper dive into research. Both are things we've talked about at previous meetings. Ross and I have collected what we could find for information, so hopefully we have some general answers to questions board members might have. But that's what we were thinking and hoping a direction we could start with today.
Thank you very, very much. I want to give everyone an opportunity maybe to just plant the seed of what we're each thinking, maybe constructively, what we're looking to pitch, and at the same time, if we have any questions or reservations on our own behalf, uncertainties. I know I definitely have uncertainties that are limiting factors to my ability to contribute, and that's why collaborating is important. So for me, I'll just break the ice with this. I don't know how it's going to happen, but I know that people in the town will become a lot less upset over time as it relates to projects and proposals that they see and hear about in the middle to later stages if they understand maybe the opportunity that the developers do have by matter of right, rather it be at the town level or state level, in comparison to what the planning board did or didn't do. My goal is to make sure that the people of the town understand that we truly have the town's best interest in mind, but best interest doesn't always mimic our abilities. Our abilities might be more limited than our interests, and thereby certain projects are approved and developed. And six, 12, or 18 months later, we run into someone that says, I can't believe you guys did that, and we did not do that. We would have liked to have opposed it, but we didn't have the grounds to do it, right? So I really appreciate what they put together here from the perspective of just before the meeting, we referenced, do you feel there are enough housing options for younger residents, recent graduates, or individuals living alone? And over 60 percent answered no. So over 60 percent of the town agrees with us that these needs exist. But now we have to find a way to propose resolutions to fulfill these needs and at the same time, respect and take into account some of the zoning codes that the average resident doesn't like, such as projects that have been proposed. So I feel like deep in my heart, I know where the town wants us to go. I also feel objectively that there's direction as to where it needs to go. It's just a matter of numbers. The question is, how do we collaborate here amongst us with their help? Collaborate in a way that we understand what the pathways are to succeed and at the same time, grow sponsorship or support for what we're working on. So if it's just a simple majority when we get to town meeting, we can get there with some degree of certainty, right? If you work on a project that's, your goal is simple majority, you hate to show up to town meeting scratching your head, wondering if you're going to pull it off compared to thirds. So let's just talk a little bit about what each of us thinks can be contributory and how. Short-winded, it doesn't have to be a dissertation, but just to get each of us in each other's wheelhouse thinking. So would you like to start? Is that okay, if we just start here?
I think the very first thing that we have to do is, once we come up with something, we really have to educate the public. Because a very good example is what happened on Route 6. We tried to do what was called a friendly 40B, which means that the town had more control over a friendly 40B than a 40B. And we tried to rezone a section of Route 6 for a friendly 40B. Well, he has to go to town meeting, and town meeting said, we don't want any more houses. We're going to turn this down, and it's never going to be built.
I'll just pass this around just a second. This is the district.
Unfortunately, we now have a 40B there with a substantial number of more houses or condos and rentals being built. We really have to educate the public that saying no sometimes gets something worse and saying yes to something sometimes gets you something better. Also, you can't stop, well, there are people who want to put a moratorium on growth in the town of Dartmouth, and by putting a moratorium on the town of Dartmouth, you've also put a moratorium on your taxes. We live at 2.5 percent. If there is no new growth in this town, you're living at 2.5 percent with pay raises being at three, you're now going to lose services. You've got to take it from somewhere. You can't continue to support the town in all of its services that you want and not get new growth. And I think that's another thing we have to educate the people for.
There's the map in there for what the district was that you were talking about.
Oh, okay.
That was, that was what they...
The friendly 40B on Route 6.
That was the town meeting article.
That got turned down.
Yes.
And you know, it was, and I hate to say this because I guess it's really rude and nasty to say, but all the people sitting around me at town meeting were so happy. Oh, we've got that destroyed.
There was a cheer of the crowd.
And I just turned around and said, you people have no idea what you've just voted for. Instead of getting 200 units, we're going to get 300. You have no idea what you just voted for. You've now given them the ability to go to the state and say, this is what I want, and this is what they're going to give you, because the state looks and says, oh, you're not at 10 percent. They're affordable. And I think that's one thing that we need in this town is affordable, or at least, you know, it just amazes me to know, and that my granddaughter was paying $2,000 a month for second-floor apartment in Dartmouth. $2,000 a month.
And that's probably a cheap rent right now.
Probably.
Yeah.
You know, probably. Fortunately, they have moved, but, and seniors, where are seniors going to go when they can no longer live in their two-floor home and they need a single-level house to live in? I mean, my daughter's only in her 50s, and she said to me, yesterday, she goes, you know, I can't do those stairs anymore. They're too dangerous. Because she lives in an old, old home where the steps are about this big and you can't put your foot on it.
Sure.
She says, we want to sell the house and go somewhere. She goes, but economically, it's not feasible.
Right.
So we need to look at the whole town, and we need to say, we need housing. Can we put some here? Can we put some there? Can the town somehow come up with a program to do affordable housing? I don't know. I mean, it's, that's my biggest thing, is we've got to educate the public what we want to do. I mean, we need to come up with something, put it through town meeting. We need to have public hearings. Maybe we have, maybe we need to have precinct public hearings. We've done that in the past. Have them...
The libraries.
Have them at the libraries. Have two meetings at, a meeting at the library, have a meeting here. We've got to get the public, and we've got to educate them somehow.
Thank you, Lori. I want to just add really quick, for everyone that's watching, it's not just Dartmouth. If, I mean, Margaret firsthand will know, if you go to Realtor.com and put in 02739 Mather Poizett, or Realtor, and you look at Marion, or Rochester, or even the Cushionet, your housing crisis and your housing prices and your housing difficulties, they're systemic. It's, it's not just Dartmouth.
Right.
Just so happens, we're using the word Dartmouth because we're working on the town's best interest, representing the town, but it's a very systemic issue. But Kevin, go ahead, please.
Well, to draw your point out, it is something that's happening everywhere. However, it seems to be happening in Mass the most. We are the, the single state with the highest median house sale in the country. And I believe I'm right when the, our last median price that put us in position number one, the median, not the average, $772,000. However, are we going to get a flow of young families and have people that grew up in Dartmouth and, you know, did their, had their careers in and around Dartmouth, and they want to retire and live in Dartmouth? And maybe they don't have a whole lot of means, but they've, they've worked hard and they've got an egg, can afford it. So I, there's a number of things that, as the planning board, we set as priorities. This is a big one. This has been a big one. The first step that I'm aware of, this is my fifth year on the board, the first big step that we made was the accessory dwelling unit bylaw. And I, I, I'm a little bit dismayed at the lack of applications that we get for accessory dwelling units, but I am hopeful, as the word for accessory dwelling units gets out into the public, that more people will take advantage of the ability to go from a big house and maybe have your family move into the big house, and you move into a small, private house that's, that's relatively inexpensive, and that way you can share the cost. That is a great creative way, and of course, we came up with it one year before the state said, by the way, you need, you need to, every town needs an accessory dwelling unit bylaw.
Sure.
But we need to come up with more ideas like that, that keep the character of the town, but make it affordable for people to, to come in and start a family and live out their final days in the town that they love. And that's what my opinion of this particular meeting is all about. You know, there is, we don't have applications today, we don't have A&amp;Rs, we don't have the things that really kind of keep us busy. This is all about picking a topic and saying, let's, let's do some spitballing and try and figure some, something out and come up with some ideas. Because if we don't come up with some ideas, the trajectory will continue, and our town will look even more expensive if we don't do anything. I know I've got a daughter that, that's in another state because she took a job opportunity, and she wants to come back. I said, don't come into Mass. Look around, look at Rhode Island, look at New Hampshire. It's going to be very hard for you, only three years into your career, to come into the house, and I'm not ready to go into an ADU yet. But seriously though, it's, it was disheartening because she loves Dartmouth, and she wants to come back to Dartmouth. And, you know, they're, they're very passionate about the, the presence that they, that we have here, and it's, it's not realistic for her and her boyfriend. So that's why I think we're here. I think we're here to, to come up with some ideas, and that's our job.
Thank you, Kev. Margaret?
Well, first of all, I will say that I want to thank Dan. Dan came to a meeting that I had, and he explained to about 40 people what a 40B was. And he spoke about it, and people asked questions because, you're right, Lori, most people don't understand it. When people hear 40B, they think that the town can stop it. And unfortunately, maybe the town can delay it, but unless we have good reason, you can't stop it, okay? It's a comprehensive permit. Okay, I think one of the problems is, and I want to do stuff for over 55, and I'm thinking zoning is a problem, but maybe it isn't. Does Dan, Ross, do you know how much of the, what percentage of the town needs a septic versus sewer?
I know there are stats, I can get those for you.
Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to see...
You want it in a percentage or like...
Yes, a percentage only, because that's one of the things that's problematic. You know, a lot of the South Dartmouth, a lot of the North Dartmouth, that's septic systems. I mean, how are you going to put multiple units on properties that need septic systems? Very difficult, okay? Especially with what's gone on in the last couple of years. You just can't do it. So other states have zoning for villages. Are you familiar with any of that, Dan?
No.
Okay, I think I have read about it, and I'm going to, I tried today, I just didn't have time, but I'll, I'll look it up and send it to Dan. They have zoning for villages. In other words, they'll put closed housing together, and they are housing for young couples, and they are in close proximity, and they share the parking, they share this, they share that. That's maybe one thing we could look at, okay?
I think Dennis has something like that.
Does Dennis have something like that? So maybe we can...
Term differently, but that general...
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm just calling it what I've seen, like down in Florida, okay? Villages.
Well, yeah, you look, most places around the country, you see more clustered development.
Yes, California.
And we don't, everywhere. We, we look at things, Carolinas, mid-Atlantic, there's much more cluster opportunities.
And I think...
Something we looked at for the starter home community...
Right.
Is, is up that alley.
Right.
Which I talked to a planner last week from Mansfield, that they're in the process of starting that kind of community. So they've just started the outreach and everything, and she took some time to talk to me about it, so that was one of my options to look into, but...
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm sorry, but I think...
The housing survey, that was one of the, one of the options.
Oh, yeah, and if you look at some of these results, you see it.
Yeah.
For, for older population downsizing, because what it does is it caps the size of the house. Because what happens? You keep seeing more expensive lots, you keep seeing bigger houses. You're not going to, you're not going to buy a $429,000 lot and then put an 1,800 square foot house on it. So you're losing that, missing middle, as they call it, in some of these items. So how do we get that back? Well, you have to have higher density, right? So those give different options. And the state allows in, in that overlay district to have mixed use. There's incentives to the town, but we can go into some of that later.
And the other thing that I've read about, and I don't know where they exist, but I, I have read about these units, and they usually are pretty good. It's like a multifamily, and I'm talking over 55 now. It's like a multi, like it's a small, not assisted living, but it's a small unit, maybe it serves six or eight people, and it's built, and each, but each person has their own individual units, and it's not for anyone who's ill or sick, it's just somebody who's downsizing. And they share kitchens, they share parking, they share community services.
It's like a community living kind of setup.
Yes, yeah. And that's another thing for over 55. And duplexes, okay? Now, I know a duplex is what, general residence zone?
Um, most districts you can do all right, you just need...
I know you can do multifamily and general residence for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, so duplexes, nice duplexes or townhouses. We could maybe zoning or something, do something like that. Because if you have a nice townhouse, a nice duplex, you can build it, you can rent one side out, you can actually, later on in life, conduit.
Right.
So, and it goes again around zoning. And as far as density, I think density would be, just as my opinion, on Route 6, because you have the infrastructure, you have all kinds of retail and everything that you would need, restaurants...
Transportation.
Transportation. Whether you're, maybe if you're a young family, you wouldn't want to live on Route 6, but older people would like to live on Route 6, okay?
I think you see a trend too among even, like you're talking about younger families. They don't have the, I don't know if desire is the right word, to have those big lots that they're spending their whole weekend doing lawn maintenance on. They're looking for low-maintenance yards, they're looking for smaller yards, so I think that's...
A good example of that is Lincoln Park.
Right.
I mean, 99% of the people there are just absolutely thrilled. They don't have to cut the lawn, and they can, you know, instead of spending five hours cutting the lawn, they spend five hours with their children.
Right.
You know, yeah.
So, you know, if we could do more of those kind of places, okay, in town? And I don't know, Dan, how we would get around that with overlays or, if it's in a commercial use, you can do a change of use, correct?
Um, yeah, through the ZB.
Commercial, you can do a change of use.
Yeah.
So that, that we could get through.
Yeah, you can't get a use variance in any residential districts, but you can get it in the other districts.
Right, but in the commercial, we can.
Correct.
So anything that is, you know, you look at Farns Corner, okay? There's another big parcel for sale on Farns Corner, all right? Past, past the Hawthorne, and on the left and right sides. So, and they have, I think, all utilities that they need there because of what's there. So we have some properties, and I know the town owns some properties that are serviced by sewer.
Yeah, I think we definitely need to look a little bit outside of Route 6 at least, because a big detriment to the Route 6 development area from crossroad to the town line is the Zone 3 aquifer, which limits 10% lot coverage. So that makes it extremely limiting.
That's another thing, and I don't want you to get angry with me. Don't get angry.
I'll never get angry.
Okay.
We can differ.
Okay. We, we can differ. I, I, I feel that, that 10% lot coverage is a real hardship on people. And as we grow, 10% maybe needs to be changed to, maybe to 30% lot coverage.
We are the only state, we are the only state and the only town that has that Zone 3. All the towns and all states have Zone 1 and 2.
Right.
We are the only one that has Zone 3. I don't think any way in whatever we would be able to do away with Zone 3, but if we made it more friendly and went with maybe a 30% lot coverage, we would be able to accomplish more with a stronger drainage, with a stronger protection.
Right, you can keep use restrictions in there. Obviously, you don't want high-polluting uses, so you still want to keep those, those uses. Increase, I don't understand why you can only take into account 10% of your roof area to infiltrate. So if you have a roof that takes up 15% of your lot, you still have to infiltrate the whole thing.
Right.
But you only get 10% credit for it when it's supposed to be clean runoff, correct?
Right.
There's, there's some things in there.
That doesn't make sense.
No, not at all. So you're required to infiltrate your entire roof runoff, but you only get credit for up to 10% of the lot area.
So it doesn't make sense. It's almost like...
There's, there's a lot of things that can be looked at with current...
Yeah.
...technologies, with current drainage, different avenues you can do with, with greater TSS removals. I think there's definitely things you can look at. I think if you look at the Zone 3, it's in its entirety, and you start taking out wetland resource areas that obviously will have no development, surface waters, roadways, setbacks, you start looking at what, what realistically percentage could you develop in its entirety? I think people would have a different view on, does that 10% really need to be there?
Yeah, especially along the Route 6 corridor.
Correct.
Right, so that's what I think.
Thank you, Margaret. Hila?
So I'm taking a little bit of a different approach. Part of, we, I think we have a good roadmap already between the master plan, the housing production plan. There's a lot of good work that's already been put into place, giving us that roadmap of the work that we need to do on behalf of, of the town. I think my comments to this is maybe looking ahead a little bit, is to always keep one eye on how we're going to communicate this to our fellow residents. Part of the challenge that we face, which may not be insignificant, is not just doing the good work that this board will do in establishing different zoning requirements, different criterias, but it's really communicating that to the residents and ultimately town meeting. And a good deal of time, or the right amount of time, in coming up with that communication plan of the hows and the whys. Whether at town meeting or any other forum, I believe that there is a significant challenge that we will face in how to properly communicate this, this good work. It's, it's unfortunate that, and it's not a criticism that what I'm about to say, it's not in any way, but many times when things don't advance, I believe it's because we're not communicating the pros and the cons and what the real story is. For example, we talk about this whole 40B thing, you know, and I, and I wrote down some, some notes here, is, you know, how do we convey the message responding in the most deliberate and communicative way of what this board and by extension, the town needs to do? And part of the messaging is, we are trying to control our own path and not have it be controlled for us. Let us drive what we want it to be and not have it be driven for us. The do-nothing state is almost like a death spiral, and unfortunately, I feel like we're caught up a little bit in that, where it's the status quo, the status quo isn't working, we have inventory issues, we have, you know, a price... We have inventory issues, we have, you know, a pricing, um, crisis in the town. So doing nothing is really unsustainable. So we can come up with all the great ideas, and I know and co- I'm confident that we will. But if we don't know how to communicate it to the residents and at town meeting, it's going to be a lot of work for nothing. Um, you know, we talk about, here's scalability. It's hard to build in Massachusetts. It's expensive to build in Massachusetts, whether it's single-family homes, any kind of mixed-use development. It is really, really expensive. So scalability is part of the affordability, um, equation. And even when we're talking about the Aquifer, you know, the ten percent number is out there. Is ten percent a prescriptive measure that we can be, that can be implemented? And we can consider, should consider a fifteen, twenty, whatever the right percentage is from an engineering way. Now, when I look in the building code, there are prescriptive ways that said, hey, if you just do this, you're fine. Or you require somebody to put the thought behind it and say, hey, if you do this, this, and this, in an engineered manner, you're also going to be able to comply and ensure, um, that the project or the effort is going to be okay. But it just requires more of an engineered, thought-provoking exercise. So there has to be different ways where we can still keep the ten percent to safeguard the Aquifer in certain areas. But to say also, here, here's another option. If you can go out and prove X, Y, Z, and, and do this, this, and this, that, okay, it's game on, and not just slam the door. Again, we're in this picture because there's a lot of been, a lot of door slamming. So I just want to throw that out there, that let's keep one eye on how we're going to message this in anything that we're going to come up with.
Appreciate it. And I, I agree, because I, it is a strong pain point of mine in my soc- social circle in particular to hear the commentary as to what actually happens in town and the implication that we perhaps agree with everything that's happening, or that it came from us, when it's not even close to the case. That's A. Actually, that's B. A goes back to when I was running and trying to get involved. The criticism I got from individuals that are very close to me about the words development and Route Six being in the same sentence. But they did not know or were not aware of zoning opportunities that they now are upset about. And those zoning, those zoning opportunities were in place then, right? So it's not only communicating our message, it's politely when we're communicating, asking and planting a little bit of knowledge as to what currently exists and why we're thinking the way we're thinking, right? Um, so I'm stuck as an individual. Very stuck as it relates to the problem that we have, that we're trying to solve, when we get away from Route Six. And to the contrary, some people have said, you're really fixated on developing Route Six. My deduction is this, that if the average buildable lot in South Dartmouth, two-acre zoning is, just use round numbers, five hundred thousand, or one acre is three seventy-nine, ready to build on. And we can go into a increased density, mix, change the zoning, get into Route Six, where there's already property and footprints established. Theoretically, the cost per square foot of the land for the units that we're going to erect is a fraction of the costs that would be anywhere else other than there, where the one or two acre costs X, right? Or in this case, two X. So I'm not fixated on Route Six because I have a bias to Route Six or because I'm protecting South Dartmouth. I just struggle as an individual to understand with the problems that we all have, how can we solve the word affordable in South or North Dartmouth, where the land cost per door is going to be X? But along Route Six, that opportunity might be a fraction per door. That, so I'm just sharing with you folks why I've been somewhat fixated on the Route Six corridor. It's because by design, I've assumed that the cost per unit is going to have an increased likelihood of being affordable than in the boundaries of South or North Dartmouth, so.
It might be that Route Six is the low-hanging fruit of a bigger picture that we're trying to solve. Maybe we don't sit. Route Six shouldn't be looked at as the only.
Agreed.
Opportunity.
A hundred percent.
Might, well, to, I think to what you're saying, it's, it's there. There's a lot of pros that don't require other heavy lifting.
Right.
It's the, for a lot of reasons that we've all discussed. It's, it's just sitting there.
It might have the most opportunities available to do different things.
Well, Kevin.
Structure is there.
Right.
Kevin Mello used to use the phrase bite at the apple. I, if I had to guess, or if I had to bet some money, where town meeting would be more likely to take a bite at something from us? I have to believe it's along the Route Six corridor, because selfishly, the individuals will look at it as the lesser of two evils and their interests are protected, whether they're south or north. I'm just calling a spade a spade. And the, the net-net of our effort at some point incrementally, to Helio's point, needs to be progress. We don't want to just do this and get nowhere and just have these frivolous ideas that sound good, but we get nowhere. So, once we make our way around later tonight, I'm happy to hear from each of you and as a group, look at where else. But I, I think we have to also focus on the likelihood of the development per door being affordable. Because in the, in the end, what are we trying to achieve? It's not just a new zone, or it's not, it's not just a forty Y, or it's not just something that we created. It's something that has to come to fruition. We need doors. We need doors with a deadbolt and a lock set at affordable prices. So, you know, we, we can chime on from here. I thought this was, um, I thought this was interesting, where it said over sixty percent would support a starter home development in town. The irony of it, though, is our town is pretty broad and our town is very diverse. I would have loved to have known if this was broken down, would you support a starter development? You know, if it was quad, I'm not going to use the words north and south all night, but if there were quadrants or zones within the town, where would you like to see more starter homes? It would be interesting. So I'm, I'm an open book. Where, where, where can we, where can we collaborate?
If I could just piggyback just on one thing, you're talking about the Route Six and the burden of doing that area. One of the, the drawdowns from that twenty-seventeen vote was the people in that area felt like they're the ones that always are taking the burden. So, yes, I think they're the most options for whatever we come up with, overlays, whatever. But I think we need to look at other options to show we're not just singling on one spot. There's other areas in town that have sewer. There's, there's other areas in town. You might not see a sixty-unit development, but you might take a general residence, say that's at fifteen thousand square feet, they, maybe you have a one-acre lot that you couldn't really do a lot with. But now, if we did a starter home community, you could do four or five, and then it becomes economically worth it. So, you know, I don't think we want to just look at big picture, I'm not saying big picture, big volume units, but also look at what else might be available to do the four or five units under, under that higher density. So I think that's an option to look at where it doesn't feel like we're, we're singling out a specific area in town where we're putting. I know you're not, but that the appearance is that we're putting the burden all on one section of town.
And the other.
I think that's critical to, to look at as well.
The other thing we have to look at is there's not much buildable land left in Dartmouth. I mean, it, there's just not. You're not going to go out there.
Simple. Everything's going to have a, a resource area.
You're not going to go out there and find thirty acres to build anymore.
A square flat.
It's, it's not there. Uh, you may, may, you may find five acres over here, but you're lucky if you can get three of those five acres buildable, ledge or a river or wetlands or whatever. So we're not looking at ten thousand homes being built in Dartmouth. I mean, we're lucky if we get five hundred.
Right.
I mean, except for forty Bs. Um, there's just not a lot of land left. I mean, if you look at the map, you can, you can see it.
This, this, I'll, I'll pass this around too. This, this was a map that was done in twenty-sixteen of potential development based on current zoning. So if you look around the town at, at parcels that, that were able for development, well, most of these are eighty thousand square foot lots. So like I said, it might not be big forty, fifty units, but some of these lots that could only do two houses, so it's not economically feasible to do a development there. If we do something that's four or five, then all of a sudden, things.
Sure.
May make sense, but that just gives you an, an, an idea, um, of where the parcels were.
It all depends on, on sewer and septic too, though.
It can, but like, um, I can pa- I can send an email out too for, for that Marshfield one. The, the Marshfield, Lori looked at it. That's a, that's a sewer pro- uh, septic system project.
How many units?
Um. Yeah, did I say Marshfield, Mansfield?
I'll find it, continue.
It's, it, it was a substantial size.
Well, there's no sewer around Hill, and they did their own development.
Right. I mean, a hundred percent, it's much more difficult if you've got to do, if you've got to do septic.
But Hawthorne, uh, Country Club had a developer that wanted to go in there and put in sixty-six units. And I've, I've got this, I've got a copy of that. I don't know what happened, but I think that they were not, um, they were not encouraged, just to put it that way.
Talking about the project before this one.
Yes.
Which was, which was a drastically reduced.
Sixty-six units.
Yeah.
And they told her. They were not encouraged.
They came, they came in and talked to us in a, in a public meeting. It was Toll Brothers.
Yeah. So, so this, I, I can email this out, but this, this is the project they're proposing in Mansfield. It's eighty units on septic.
Eighty units.
Eighty units on septic. But it gives you kind of an example of, of different things you can do.
The Toll Brothers was going to put sixty-six, and they were going to put it on the septic, but.
No, they have.
No, no, they, they were going to.
Yeah, but he said to me, because I met with him, that if he had to, he'd put his own, his own.
If he had to, yeah.
If he had to, if the town wouldn't give him sewer, he was prepared.
Because that's another big issue, which we've talked about in different times. What is, what is the real sewer capacity? And that was what he said. He said, if I need to put a.
That's what he said.
A large-scale septic system, I will reduce it to the forty-seven plus or minus units.
But we were like another one, you know, some people all know, we don't want that developed. Well, now what do you got?
Yeah, you got, got a forty-seven.
Okay.
So you're going back to the dynamic that Lori brought up. Be careful of what you say no to.
Exactly right. And unfortunately.
I go back to, pe- people that are developing land, that you've got to take into account they're doing it to make money.
Right.
Yeah.
That, you've got to keep that component in mind. So they're going to, they're not going to just go along with, you know, big, huge lots. Every, every, you know, thing in the book that we can ask for, and they'll, they're just going to say, okay. They're going to look for an option that's going to make them money. So we have to take that into account too. Which, talking about the outreach, I think it's, it's important, and, and the town's done this in the past, where they've had outreach to, to developers, to engineers, to architects, um, to different other programs, to get feedback from them as well. Because we can come, if we can come up with what we think is the best option in the world, but if no developers.
Going to do it.
Can make it work, it's, it's just going to sit there as another zoning regulation. So I think at some point, to Helio's point about outreach, um, that I think is an important aspect to consider as well.
We do have a couple of builders in this town who have done quite a bit, and if we could outreach to them, I mean, even bring them into a meeting.
Right.
I can think of.
Say, these are the things, say, these are the things we're, we're, we're looking at as options.
Yeah.
Is this something that you would be interested in develop if this, if you had this option here in town?
Do we have a new, new apartment complex on Te- on, uh, Fons Connor Road?
It was approved.
Was it approved?
Forty B?
No, 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 just apartments, behind like the Dunkin' Donuts that went on Fons Connor.
Was that approved?
Or, I believe, oh, yeah.
There's more, there's more room on that land.
Yes. So that could be something that somebody might look into.
And that's one developer we could bring in.
Yeah, yeah.
Do, do we have a pulse on how the public will react, especially to the Y, to the starter home definition, when really, it, it's, it's really just a small, isn't it really just a small B on a very small scale? In terms of when we're looking at lot size and square footage of the homes and price point, isn't it really just a small B? My question is, do we know how the public will respond? Do they really have a problem? Let, let me back up. I know they have a problem with a hundred and forty-seven units, based on the amount of land that's there. But if that was one-third the land, and it was one-third the units, or in this case, one-eighth the land and one-eighth the units, sometimes perception is reality. Would they look at that as a mini B, and are we going to get pushback?
Well, I'll tell you.
It, it, it's a certain amount before you have to do affordable. It, it, I, I, I think I passed this out too before, but this is Cape Cod Commission put this out. It's kind of like a fact sheet. Um, and it kind of just gives, gives an overview of the forty Y.
Well, I have found, I have found that when you are going to do, let's say we decide, uh, we don't decide, but we, we feel that there's a parcel of land on Slocum Road, okay? And so we think that we could develop that parcel of land for forty units. I have found in my own business, and, uh, before you go too far to go door to door, have a meet, that's what I do. I knock on the door. Can you come on Tuesday? We're going to have coffee and donuts. We'd like to explain this to you. And it works.
Nice.
People are afraid of the unknown.
Sure.
You have to.
Natural instincts.
Go on. You have to, uh, uh, I, I know when they sold the property across the street from where I live. I thought, oh, my God, are they going to develop all that? And they ended up developing it, but they put in.
I, 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 I've been on the other side of these tables for many years, and every project I've ever done, the neighbors were concerned.
Right.
And most of the time after development happens, there's very little complaints of what happens. But just that unknown fear of what's going to happen.
Knock on the door, you, 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 you say, look, we're going to have a meeting at the town hall, you know, coffee and donuts provided. We want you to come. We want to explain what we're doing here, so that you have a full understanding. And we want, we value and we will pay attention to whatever you say to us.
Educate, educate, educate.
That's what you have to do.
What happens, what has happened in the past with the estate lots. I have that.
Okay.
Um, so the estate lots are, um, no, let's do, I'm sorry, OSRDs, the OSRDs, that's what I want to talk about, the OSRDs.
Yeah.
The OSRDs is if you have ten acres, and by right you can build five homes. But you can take those five homes and put them down on a quarter of acre. You have less destruction of property, less roads, less everything. It's, it's cheaper to build, and you've got all this open space. Every single OSRD that came before us, the neighbors came in and said, I have a half an acre, I want them to have half an acre. Or I have an acre, I want them to have an acre. It, it, it happened every single time. So I mean, it's perception and it's educate. I mean, I'm coming back to what I said before, you really need to, no matter what you do, no matter what projects it is, you really need to educate the public as to what, what the meat and potatoes are.
Right. And even with talking about for septic systems, people think, well, how can you fit a septic system on there? Well, you do a nitrogen aggregation plan that gets recorded at the registry, border health goes through. So the site in its entirety is not being overburdened with nitrogen as compared to a conventional system. It's just in a smaller area and the rest is preserved as natural state, which has a better effect. And sure, you saw when we went to eighty thousand square feet, how many people clear cut the entire property and fertilized the heck out of it four, five, six times a year. So is that helping nitrogen?
No.
Sounded good in theory, right? But.
Well, they don't clear the whole thing, and they use the, the back half is a garbage, dumping area.
Right.
So I mean, we've, you, you thought you were going to get, and what you got were two different things. But I, this is awful to say, and I'm going to say it anyway. When two acres was passed, it was snob zoning. It was not based on anything other than we do not want any more people in town. And the people who sat on this board will tell you that. That's what it was based on. It wasn't based on anything scientific, like you need X amount of square footage for a septic, and, I mean, sewer and water.
Yeah, well, well, setbacks, everything else, well, setbacks.
Because if you sit down and look at our land, and you can say, on this piece of property, you need an acre to build because of the type of soils, if you're going to have, um, a septic and well. Well, over here, you only need half an acre, because the soils are better. So that's what you should be, if you're going to do something, you need to base it on real science.
And there's, and there's lots in town that were done under forty Bs, under different things, with the slowest rate soils. And they made it work.
They made it work.
So, again, it's not the end-all be-all. Yes, sewer is a much easier path and a much simpler thing if there's capacity than septic, but it's not, it shouldn't be.
The end-all.
Saying, no, we can't make any of these things. Saying, no, we can't make any of these things work if we don't have, if we don't have sewage available.
As far as a, as far as coming to an overlay of whatever definition. If the definition of the overlay is X but wants to be applied to seven different parts of town. Is it seven different overlays, or is it one overlay that gets applied by the following seven boundaries? How does that work?
And I know, I know you're gonna think I'm uh trying to persuade the board, but going back to the forty-Y. Forty-Y does not have to have a contiguous area, so that's another benefit of it. Um other than that, then you would have to have specific areas.
Well, like, we're we're just like with with these different zones that we have. You can have mixed-use zone here, mixed-use zone there.
Right, you just can't have spot zoning.
Right, so I I'm kind of.
You could have multiple overlays. But you have to.
The same rules, just different areas.
Yeah.
Um yes and no, if you're going to do, um, okay, let's say we wanted, this parcel's gonna be this type of zoning. You can't do just one parcel with certain zoning.
No, that's not, it's not spot zoning, yeah.
But you but you could have a section over here that we're calling the, you know. Route six west overlay district, then you could have another, that's a, I know we already have a France Connor overlay. But some France Connor, you know, the high density overlay, so you can have multiple things. They'd have to be individual zoned, individual, probably individual articles, I'm guessing, correct?
Yeah.
That you'd have to do separate.
To do it that way.
Whereas other options, you could do it as one overlay.
I mean, I think our biggest problem, if you really wanna look at it, is like the end of development across the street from me. There are lots are gonna start at four seventy-five, that's where you build a house, okay? Um, we have uh uh ZBA has a a complex going before them, it's gonna be luxury apartments. Everything that's being built is up here, you know, it's it's luxury, it's high-end, it's. Where is the average person supposed to go?
Exactly, where the the neighborhoods that were built in the seventies in this town.
Well, the neighborhoods, those are disappearing.
Yeah, because, but what dictates it, lot size, house size, labor, but that's not really our purview.
Well, Dan, I I don't remember this, 'cause I was, I was not uh on any boards and I was a lot younger. When they put in Onyx Drive, uh that and Diamond Court and all that. That was some kind of a subsidized housing, it wasn't like a farty B or anything, but you had to like.
That was the same thing with like um Meadowwood, right, wasn't Meadowwood had some kind of?
No, Meadowo- Meadowwood was a K and B project, but.
There was, there was, I know there was another one, Pontigan's Village, maybe I'm thinking of, that's what I'm thinking of.
Kind of uh zoning and what what was done there, I'd like to know, because those people, most of those.
Yeah, that was a program, like, I don't know, I don't know if it was, I don't know if it was state or.
No, I think you had to keep it, you had to keep the house for seven years.
Yeah, for so many years.
Yeah, 'cause my sister bought one, and she's still there.
That was, that was before I was involved in anything, but I know what you're talking about.
Okay, so that brings up another question.
Available for different kind of programs anymore.
Okay, Slocum Road, we have a forty-B.
Okay.
Um, and I I forgot how many affordable houses are in there, they can, have to be sold as affordable housing.
Yes.
And I I've, people have asked me this question, I've always said, go to the Board of Selectmen, who can, who, who watches this? It's the Board of Selectmen's office, right?
Yeah, I would assume whoever the housing and economic development.
I don't think they all have to be sold as as a farty B.
No, the twenty-five percent.
Just the one, yeah.
But if, but you're supposed to monitor if it if it sells at a certain time, it's supposed to remain.
Because I've seen them for sale and I've never thought of that, I've never thought to ask that.
Restricted, right?
Yeah, it should be.
So it would show up on a title.
But that's the only way, you have to, you know, you have to be a good.
You you're allowed to sell it at a certain percentage higher, and I forgot what it is, three percent or something.
Sell it for what you got, but it still has to be in that.
Well, you 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 all remember why that housing went that way, because they were gonna put apartments.
It was amazing, then the next meeting, they already had the plan done.
Yes.
How long ago was this?
Oh geez.
Early two thousands?
Yeah, about the early two thousands, yeah, that was, I mean, they had apartments there and, eee, my god, they had people.
Lined up.
Lined up on the non- uh.
I was like, all right, we'll we'll go back to the drawing board and then like, next meeting, all of a sudden they had a whole new layout. It was like, wow, that was a fast engineering job I've ever seen.
So the, so, okay.
We're 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 all functioning around and swinging around this number affordable. What is considered affordable?
Eighty percent of the, what's the word I'm looking for?
No, the area median, the area median income.
Area median income.
But that's, that's in a, that's in a B, in a Y, at least ten per-.
Hundred and ten percent.
At least ten percent of the homes in a Y must be made affordable, making it up to a hundred and ten percent of the area meeting in meeting income. So in a Y, greater earning families can still take part in a Y. However, sorry, real quick, a Y also, according to this. Um has to be at least three bedrooms. And can be up to eight hundred and fifty square feet of living space, so starting to put.
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred and fifty square feet of living space, so just starting to formulate what kind of a house you might see. You know, eighteen hundred and fifty square feet at four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot built, spec built. Eighteen fifty times four hundred, where are you? All of a sudden, you're in the high sevens again and you're calling it a starter home, and that's in four fifty a square foot. Is is not rolling, doing anything special with tall ceilings, it's Bob Long coming in saying, I can give you a great deal, here. So even though it's starter home, my message to anybody that's listening and to my friends and family after this meeting. Is you have to understand, it's not three ninety-nine nine, it's still real money.
But Lori had a wonderful uh idea when, before BM, before Margaret was on the planning board. About subdivisions, when we get a subdivision, why can't we pass some kind of uh bylaw?
You've mentioned that.
Yes.
Where one of the five or two of the ten.
But again, it it'll only work on certain price fixes.
Yeah.
If somebody's like across from the street from her, the lots are selling for four seventy-five. And uh say he's building them all, well, he can't possibly build a house next to them for four hundred thousand dollars. Just, everybody's gonna know that's the house.
Or if he does build one for four hundred to make his money, that means those other houses are now going up.
Right, to eight.
Differential.
But it, I remember that meeting, and I brought up the idea that it doesn't have to be in the same subdivision.
Be somewhere else.
Right, it could be somewhere else.
Somewhere else.
That's a great point.
Good idea.
To the, our goal is to add to the overall number. Doesn't, doesn't have to, if you wanna develop these five expensive houses and these five lots.
Give us one somewhere else.
Give us one somewhere else, that that is three ninety-nine, and it can be something that's affordable. As a starter home, and it can help somebody build equity. Cause another, like, because building affordable, affordable living is is important. But also, if you're, if you're looking for a starter home, it's gotta have, it's gotta be the the first stepping stone to equity. And hopefully, the value will appreciate, you can sell it, and then you can parlay that into something to support a growing family.
But, again, you're gonna have a restriction on that, you're gonna have a deed restriction.
Yes.
On that affordable house, on that separate lot, because you have to.
So, but ta- uh I'm getting back to the point, how how are we defining affordable? You you talked about average median income, how does that relate to the actual price of the house?
That's all determined by the state, right?
Well, if it's, if it's subsidized, it'll be controlled and determined by the state, right? But Kevin's talking about a non-subsidized, a non-subsidized situation where we picked up a credit.
Right.
Initially, we picked up a credit as an affordable unit, how do we maintain that credit? Transaction after transaction, right?
Oh, because it will be a deed, deed restriction.
But then you're asking what makes it affordable?
Yes, I'm I'm trying to, e- even, even let's, let's figure out, tell me how the state figures it out in a forty-B. Help, like, the average, how does the average median income translate into what you can charge?
Oh, you mean the price of house?
The price.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's still too high.
I'm I'm trying to get my arms around.
It's it's a percentage of income, I don't know if it's thirty-something percent. So basically, whatever that AMI is, then they figure you can spend, I don't know the number off the top of my head. But say thirty-five percent of that, that's what you can do, so say like for one of the ones we have in town, that's determined to be two hundred and forty thousand.
So let's say you've got two people in the household.
And it goes up by number of people you have.
They're making a sum total of a hundred thousand dollars, maybe a little bit more. You're taking a percentage of their income?
So so this is Dennis I'm looking at, sorry to interrupt you, they they have a note that says, common charges. So that would be mortgage, interest, principal, taxes, insurance, shall not exceed thirty percent of the annual income for a household. Add or below eighty percent, and this would be a Barnstable County median income, so they do that number at thirty percent.
Okay.
You know, the other thing with what's happening in town.
How do they account for changes in more, like mortgage rates?
Well, that's it, that's the issue too.
Well, that's an issue too, the other thing that's happening in town is we're actually losing our affordable housing. Because, I mean, this happening in in my son's neighborhood is, they live in what I would say is an affordable, I don't know if it's affordable anymore. The houses are going for five hundred thousand, but what do they do? Right next to them, they tear down a house and put up a million-dollar home. We're losing our affordable neighbor, our affordable just areas too.
I agree with you.
That's gonna happen though, unfortunately, that's just gonna happen over time.
Yeah. I mean, they own the land, so you can do what you want.
Do what they want, but I mean, we're losing it on all 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 ends here, you know, and and all ends that we don't have control over.
Well, I also.
We're winning a little bit, we're we're winning, we're we're, this doesn't contribute to tonight's problem. But we're winning overall by the vested interest in investing in Dartmouth. There's obviously a profound interest in staying here, and there's obviously a profound interest in putting money into Dartmouth. So on a grand scale, we're winning, we're just trying to accommodate a need that we've grown away from. I sympathize with what we're trying to do, it would be worse if those homes were not only not being rebuilt. But were being left unattended because people were migrating away from Dartmouth. So proud to say, the problems we have are good problems. The one that we're trying to solve is a very reasonable and respectful problem. That needs to be resolved for the overall good of local humanity, I mean, we gotta get to it. My question was gonna go back in between you and Kevin. If ultimately, in the Y, are are developers given a certain target? That the house, the plans are gonna come before us, do we have the right? Do we need to know that these plan, these are gonna go on the market for four ninety, four ninety-nine nine? I notice, is there a control mechanism from the beginning of site plan review, or these projects coming before us? That we in ourselves, part of the permit, if you were to part of the promise, uh process. We know ahead of time that these are gonna maintain a particular range of numbers on the market.
I think that'll go into what we put in, if we decide to go as one of the options, how are we gonna do it? We're gonna do it as part of a site plan review package, so if somebody wants to do this, they're gonna come before the planning board on the site plan review. So we'll view it more as a site plan review application as opposed to a subdivision application. Or we wanna have them do it as a Form C, that they have that reduced zoning and they have to provide all that information.
I have another question, specific, right where we are right now.
Yeah.
Do 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 these, and Mar- Margaret, I'm sure you'll chime in on this, do these, are these something like an FHA law? Do we have any idea of the lending opportunities that these homes will get? Because if these are homes that are gonna be bought with three percent down. Then the mortgage payment's gonna be seventeen percent more than what it would be with a conventional down payment. And all of a sudden, we're out of scope based on average, hundred and ten percent of the average median income. And now the numbers start getting out of scope, so is.
So so this, this is what, um, this regu- and these are draft regulations, this is still a work in progress, this hasn't been for the.
This is specific to Y?
Yes, so this says, requirements shall be documented in a special permit, so they're gonna do it through a special permit application. Um, it'll be documented in a restrictive covenant covenant, and also contained in deed rider for each income restricted unit pursuant to. Mass General Law one eighty-four, section thirty-one, and approved by Planning Board and Town Council. So there there is gonna be some oversight written into um whatever they do, okay? And they, they're calling this, they're calling this a multi-generational housing overlay district. The house, going back to one thing.
Mansfield, or is this, oh Mansfield, okay.
You say multi-generation, you mean it, you're gonna keep it for multiple generations, or you're gonna have different.
Cause, cause what it, what it's done, it's not supposed to just be like.
Young people.
Young people.
Not just starter.
You're taking, you're taking the older generation that wants to down, downsize into that smaller house. You're taking the young generation that's trying to find their first house, so they wanna make it multifaceted approach. The benefit of what you're getting, yes, the house costs are gonna be the same, but they're getting more units per land. So now they can split up the land cost, so that's where the differential on cost is gonna be. That's why I said labor costs and material costs, that's not what, we we can't control that. We can control land size and other, and other aspects, yeah.
What about looking at, um, and I know they have this in other cities and towns across this country. Um Walmart has apartments over its, over their buildings, what about the mall, what about Walmart? What about Target? I mean, especially Walmart, they have more parking than they need, the mall now has more parking than it needs.
Before.
We have.
Parking spaces, especially for large-scale use.
Yeah.
Is is dwindled drastically, go to Target right now, go to Walmart right now, where are the cars? They're in the quick pickup lines, so they're in and out, they're not in there shopping for an hour, so you're having the high volume of parking, so.
Even on your worst day, on the Black Fridays, they're they're not.
No, I I was, I was telling somebody, for people that were around here, you went to the mall around Christmas time, you drove around the parking lot three, four times. Just to find a parking spot, you're not gonna find that now.
No, you sometimes park right up front.
Yeah, you're like, oh man, I can't get a close parking spot.
Well, not to be confused though, that everything we just talked about above the commercial footprints, not Y. We're just talking about increased density.
You can have mixed use in a Y.
But here, it says it must be a single-family home, not exceeding eighteen hundred and fifty square feet, is that not true?
In what, in what the definition.
Under the forty-Y definition.
Well, are we talking specifically about forty-Y, or are we still just throwing ideas out there?
We're throwing ideas out there, I think.
When I came in and sat with Dan and Ross, one of the ideas that I came up with is, they're start, I, they're already doing this, by the way. But would you, what you had mentioned, is retail, big flat retail roofs.
Right, and the apartments above it.
Just guess what, they're customers.
Yes, absolutely.
And there's every reason you wanna have your customers right above your, and I brought up the idea.
Newport, and you see it on the main drag, there's condos all above, the main drag in Newport.
New Bedford downtown is beginning to do it, they're putting condos above.
Right, and we mentioned, I mentioned, I think Lori, we mentioned it a long time ago, it it can be done.
And then three or more bedrooms, which is tricky.
Yeah.
If you're older, or you're a professional young person, and you buy a condo or buy a property up there. You come home at eight o'clock at night and you, you wanna go down and get a coffee or a sandwich or something like that.
Go down and get your groceries, get to Walmart type of thing, yeah.
And older people don't like to drive at night, okay, I don't, I'm older, okay? So you can just walk down and get whatever you need, I mean.
It's very, very common, because there's, there's advantages on the residential side, which is what we're talking about. But even on the commercial side, there's advantages to mixed-use developments that way. It just helps with scalability, it helps with just being able to afford any kind of development. Where still at a commercial property, you have first-floor storefronts.
Right.
And then everything up above is your residential, super, super common. And again, it'd have to be specifically and appropriately located for a cohabitation like that, but a mixed-use development, I know in my world. That's ab- even across the country with some of my peers, um, on the commercial or nonprofit side. The idea of partnering on a larger scale, scale, again, scalability, doesn't, I'm not talking about, you know, a thousand units in a building. But accommodating that mixed use has that dual purpose, in no small part because of the cost of construction today.
And they're, and they're usually on mass transit.
Anywhere near public transportation, it doesn't have to be mass transit, but ideally, right, but we are talking about in our area. Um, anywhere you have access to public transportation.
Right, yeah, perfect.
It becomes game on.
So what would, what would, do you think that the owners of the mall? forgot the name of the company, they're in Pennsylvania. If we approached them and said, we are willing to make some big zoning changes, to allow you guys to build the floor across all of these buildings of residential units?
Kevin, if I can just jump in, um, we have a meeting with the mall people next Wednesday on the eighth. So I was gonna raise that question to them.
Oh, good.
What's the purpose of that meeting ultimately?
Um, they wanna just, just discuss potential options, um, so they're gonna meet with myself as well as the zoning enforcement officer.
This is in North Dartmouth malls, this is not the other one, okay.
Yes. So they're, they're coming in eighth, is that the Wednesday? Not this Wednesday, a week from Wednesday.
And I know Walmart, Walmart does this.
That was one of the things I was gonna bring up to them, that we are looking at different options. Does any of this sound like it'd be something you'd be interested in?
Are the people that are gonna attend that meeting, the people that would say yes, we're interested, or no, we're not, or?
I hadn't met them yet. It was a representative that came into the, to the planning office.
The mall manager came in.
In the.
And the, the maintenance person.
The, um, the owners are coming to town on the eighth. So as part of their trip down, they're gonna meet with us. So we might meet in the office, kinda discuss things, and then we might follow it up with a, a site visit as well.
Well, when you look at the commercial.
Good timing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you look at the commercial, uh, units that are available in, uh, where the Christmas tree shop was.
Right.
Uh, and where, well, UMass, SMU, UMass, what do you call it?
UMass.
UMass.
I still call it SMU.
Margaret.
I'm sorry. UMass, when UMass went, okay, that was vacant. Now next door is still vacant. You still have that property vacant, and that's a big spot, because I forgot.
That's what I'm saying, if it, if it's something that, so, so if the mall did have interest and we came up with an overlay, we talked about, well, as well, the parcel behind like BJ's and Home Depot.
Right, that's right.
They had proposed townhouses in there, and it kinda got.
What happened?
It just, like, I'm, I don't know specifically, but my guess is the town probably didn't have much of an interest in changing the zoning at the time, or maybe.
No, I think, um, there was a family thing at the time.
Oh, okay, well, there you go.
Okay, that was when we had a split.
I think utilities are in good shape there. I know when I, when I was coming on, one of the things I had looked into was this story of developing Route Six and looked into the utility opportunity there. And I think we're only just over sixty percent capacity at Route Six and Cross Road.
Of what?
Of utilities.
Not, not sewer, not, not sewer.
Not sewer?
I, I don't think so.
At where?
The, uh, the westerly boundary of the mall, the BJ's area and all that. I thought there was capacity there somewhere to the tune of thirty-something percent of utilities, of sewer or.
Sewer. That's, that's something I've asked the DPW a couple of times, like, how was these, these numbers factored in? When they sized these systems, they must've had some kind of gallonage figured out for these different areas. Whether it was for commercial, you can do X amount of gallons a day, or if it was mixed use, you can do this. This is how they base size slopes, lift stations, it had to have been done on something.
And they charge for INI, is that myself, not, uh?
Yeah, they, yeah, that's, that's a fee they, they're charging now. And those numbers are used to help with some of the capacity issues.
Yeah.
Because on a, on an average day, the numbers don't look terribly bad, that's what everybody points to. And they say, oh, you got plenty of room. But when you have a rain event, and again, the INI issues, that's when the numbers start looking like we go, you know.
Problem.
Future issues that we're gonna be looking into. So that INI fee gets used towards improving those things through studies.
And it's not inexpensive.
No, 'cause you're talking about replacing manholes, leaky manholes. You're talking about finding leakage in pipes, that you gotta line pipes. So those are all things that could contribute to sewer capacity issues.
Yeah, big issue with UMass, that's, thank God that got fixed.
Beta leak issue.
And how about all the land that UMass has?
Yeah, they're sitting on a ton of land.
They have a lot of land there.
Yeah.
They have, they have a, a long-term, um, plan for that.
What?
We're not, we're not, we're not, we're not privy to that information.
Laurie, I don't wanna take your pulse.
The long-term plan is that we don't wanna give it up.
That's right.
Margaret, I don't wanna take her pulse right now, but answer the question.
No, they're hoping to expand.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I have one other thing, and, and Dan brought it up, or somebody brought it up tonight, is the parking. Uh, maybe we need to look at our commercial parking rates again, because you, you know, you go, right? I mean, I go to all these, I go to Lowe's, I go to Home Depot, I go here, I go there, and empty.
Yeah.
My god.
Yeah, sea of asphalt.
So, it, it, again, it's, it's adjusting with the times.
I know, but see.
Can we predict stuff? Can we anticipate what changes will be needed?
Well, unless Amazon goes out of business.
I was just gonna say, the, the calculation is simple. Those came before you guys and were stamped, approved, to be built prior to Amazon.
Right. Amazon now, I mean, that's taken a lot away from, that's why a lot of stores are closing.
Now you got trucks coming all hours of the day. I wake, I have my windows open, I like this, temperatures are nice, and that, all hours of the night. All of a sudden, I'm waking up because there's a truck pulling down my driveway. It's crazy.
And don't forget, what's residual is now we have a lot of impervious surface in town.
Exactly, which, which contributes to things.
That could be far better utilized for some of the challenges that we're facing.
How could we incent people to somehow offer impervious surface to become non-impervious?
For existing things? For existing parking facilities? Well, if we allow mixed use, then they can do other things with their property.
Right.
They'll get rid of parking for maybe future building expansion that's being treated differently, better, however you wanna describe it.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, but I believe if planning board wanted to just do mixed use, they could just do an amendment to an existing zoning bylaw, rather than, it'd be a lot, it'd be easier than an overlay.
Yeah, you could, you could change, you could change uses in a district.
Yeah, you don't have to go to town meeting for that.
No?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, 'cause that's still a zoning change.
You can go from commercial to mixed, via town meeting.
Via town, any, any zoning change requires to go to town meeting.
If, if you wanted to, for example, change and allow use in general business where the mall was, to allow for mixed use of commercial combined with apartments, it would still have to go to town meeting, but it may be easier to pass and educate people rather than an entire overlay that they may have to
Right.
teach themselves about or, or read about.
Okay, yep.
Well, I, I know, I'll repeat this when Helyo gets back, but Dan was cautioning us months ago, and I was questioning his caution, because we were adamant about increased density or overlay. Or we, we all had some incentive, personal incentive in our minds, to create opportunity to achieve and/or reach for these numbers that are somewhat unattainable. But we had the interest in doing something, and he asked us to hang tight and hang tight. To his credit, the why is in place, right?
Yes.
The why is alive. So where, where is the path of least resistance? Where do we make the most amount of progress between now and the next one or two meetings, town meetings? And do we look to be broad? 'Cause so far, we've been broad, which is great, 'cause now we all know what each of us are thinking, and we've shared common questions. Do we stay broad and see who strikes and where we end up? Or do we start to tighten it down and say, hey, you know, this why seems to be an instrument, a viable instrument, that we need to capitalize on while it's hot and put it in play? And if so, as, Helyo, I'm just bringing you up to speed, I was just, our efforts have been great and very collaborative and broad. We all have a sense for what we each think. We all, I think, have something very common in mind. Dan created some reservation over the past few months to hang tight because of the development of the why and wanting to educate us on the why, kinda reassured us that there was something coming that we might be able to use. And I was just asking, is the why perhaps the most efficient instrument for us to gain traction and move forward at this point in time? Work hard on the why, collaborate, drop it on the map, and maybe after that, go hypothetically to Plan B, which might be that increased density overlay district. That's gonna require more legwork, more education, more meetings, more public involvement. But in the meantime, we would have put the why to work for us. And it's, it's a question, I'm just throwing it out there to everybody. Because eventually, we have to shift gears and get up and start looking at the maps and saying, okay, where and what are we thinking?
It's foundational. It, it, excuse me.
Go ahead.
It, it's foundational. This is the why.
Yeah.
Is building the story of the solutions that we will eventually present.
So one second, I'm sorry, when I say the why, I meant the forty why.
Forty why, yeah.
Okay, fair, fair.
Building up this, right, we're building the case, right? Forty why, or, or whatever, we're building the case of what we're trying to solve. This isn't a group of five people or seven people out here on a whim, right? We're not doing this just because, hey, we need something to do.
Sure.
That is not the case. There are, there are legitimate challenges that the town is facing. And the why is a reasonable foundational piece to get us to a resolution. And building the case and communicating to the residents of why we're doing this. Sorry, why.
Just, one, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say one thing. We talk about media. Well, that's a perfect thing. Why, the forty why. Why the why.
You're catchy, why the why.
Okay.
Yeah, why the why.
You have a marketing background.
Yes. Okay, so that's a perfect thing.
Yes, it is.
Very good, Margaret, very good.
I think going with the why is gonna be easier to get across to people.
And it only needs a simple majority.
And it needs a simple majority. And I think a why is, in, in my estimation, probably a good way to go, because if you look at where we would put this, we, I would put it along Route Six and Franz Connor Road. That would be my estimation, okay? Why would we do that? The infrastructure's there, number one. The, the old, the, the older generation would prefer not to drive.
Right.
So they could live there, and all of their amenities would be around them. The younger generation don't wanna buy a car. I mean, my granddaughter just bought her first car. It just amazes me to know when she would.
No, they're looking for, they're looking for simplicity.
Yeah, they, exactly. So again, the younger generation wouldn't mind living in that area because they can walk to their stores, they can get their amenities there. They can get the transportation to the train if they want to. Maybe some of them would even work in that area. So you're taking traffic off the road. You're creating more housing for people, affordable housing, and you're taking traffic off the road for these people. I mean, my granddaughter, she, she works at UMass Dartmouth, and she'd be very happy to walk, you know?
Oh, yeah.
She was walking until she decided two thousand dollars a month was too much.
I, I think you see that in, in the younger generations.
Might, might we get pushback if we, you probably wouldn't, you probably wouldn't expect this from me. Might we get pushback if we take the why and apply it to the Route Six, to the corridor that we're talking about, when all of a sudden, we're not talking about the other parts of town that need equal opportunity from the why? So my question is, are, are we creating an overlay specific for the why by definition?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, and then, so this goes back half an hour ago when I asked, if we look at, that's old, but Ross did, Ross and Dan did some great work with some updated mats in terms of parcels and acreage available or vacant. If we look at those across the town, do we wanna make sure that the why captures some of those, even though if they're away from Route Six?
Well, we can.
Well, that, yeah, it, it doesn't have to be contiguous.
Right, it doesn't have to be.
Okay.
Which is why I said, there's not a big leap from a, from a general residence to a forty why. You're going from fifteen thousand to ten thousand. You don't have to have that ten percent affordable, or is it for anything less than twelve units?
Hundreds, yeah.
So, so you, like I said, you have a, a, a small lot that you only need to do a site plan review on. So all you gotta do is provide parking, you're not doing roads. So if you, those little three acre, four acres now, where now you can make it financially feasible to do some kind of development on. And a lot of the general residence districts also have town water and town sewer, if you look at how they overlay. You're not burdening one section of town as much, but you're still hoping that developers would look at those options for all the reasons we've, we've mentioned tonight. What, I don't know. I know we did the survey through Serpen. We've done surveys on the town website before, right, of different things?
We've included links to them, yes.
So it's, so it's things that we could, we could do our own outreach.
Did the broadband survey.
Yeah, so, so there's things we could reach out to when, when we come through things. We can, you know, try to get as many, like I said, get as many people involved as we can. So we have support with whatever we come up with.
So if we were gonna do a forty why overlay, we would then propose Route Six, Franz Connor Road, Dartmouth Street.
Hey, you look at, you look at those costs where you, where you could see development. Even if it's taking a lot that could only do one or two, that wasn't financially feasible, and you could do four to eight.
Right.
Something in that range. And the infrastructure's there to support it.
Can forty why be part of a bigger mixed use? Or does that have to be standalone?
You can have multiple overlays. Gets a little, gets a little complicated, but.
Yeah.
But if you're in a commercial zone, you can do it anyway, because you can get a use variance or a cha- I mean, change.
Oh, and that's what, and that's what we're seeing right now. You're seeing, um, to your point, the, the cost of a single-family house, anything we're seeing from a residential standpoint right now is, is, is multi-unit. We, there's, there's one coming for the zoning board on Route Six across from the eight thirteen State Road we done. We have.
That's, that's the luxury one, by the way.
Oh, is it?
Yep, that's the luxury.
We, we have, we have another option coming before our concept review meeting tomorrow for a multi-unit that's gonna need a use variance. That's what developers are looking at right now, because of the cost of doing, building a road, putting all those utilities in, spread out. The cost just becomes, yeah.
Too much.
Yeah, not feasible for a developer to do, which is why the outreach, everything else to people. You wanna get people involved that are gonna have a stake in, in, in this situation. We wanna have people say, hey, look, if we, if we do this, is this something that would make sense to you?
The, the forty why also allows for the above larger commercial buildings as well.
Right, the mixed use, yeah.
It could encompass the idea of above, above a Walmart, above the mall, it could.
So that's what we want. So we, that, to me, that.
That is such an opportunity.
Yeah, we've established something good tonight, that we decided, we've narrowed it down, and this is what we want.
Yeah.
Well, can you describe particularly for people that are watching? We've talked about forty why. What is, what is the why?
Yeah, it's, I think we should read it in, just.
You wanna give me that sheet? That was a pretty good, uh, a pretty good summary.
You wanna go ahead and just read it in?
Sure. I was just wondering if I had a better, I, I had this. I don't know if you wanna read this. This was an email I sent out. That might be a little more summarized, if you wanna read that. Might be a little easier to read.
Just wanna make sure that, you have most of these points here?
I think so. I think I, I mean, that was back in, uh, how long have I, since June.
Okay.
You said that in June?
So.
Since June.
Wow.
So just for the record, forty why is, is another zoning code, um, just like forty A and just like forty B. So let's just start off. Chapter forty why sets up a process for communities to create starter home zoning districts, where starter homes can be built. These homes are designed for someone buying their first home, downsizing, or for smaller households. The law sets certain key rules for these homes. At least fifty percent of the homes in a starter home zoning district must have three or more bedrooms. At least ten percent of the homes must be made affordable for households making up to a hundred and ten percent of the area median income. The zoning must allow starter homes to be built as of right, rather than thought, than those for special permits. Starter homes can be up to eighteen hundred and fifty square feet in heated living space. Starter home zoning districts must allow at least four starter homes per acre. Chapter forty why allows communities to decide where to establish these districts and encourages builders to use sustainable practices. The overlay district will allow for mixed-use development. If adopted, the starter home overlay district will help meet some of the goals outlined in the town's master plan, as well as components of the housing production plan. We will have more discussion on this subject at the next housing production plan, et cetera, as well as our meeting and meetings to come.
And, and since then, they have set up regulations on the seven sixty, CMR sixty-nine, called the starter home zoning district.
Now, this would allow us to put the condos, let's say the condos or apartments over someone like the mall?
It's allowed mixed use, like I said.
Okay, so it is allowed.
That was important to read.
Yeah.
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 Are there regulations in effect now that we can point to and say, yes, that worked? No, we're on the cutting edge of it. So Ross and I are actively looking at anywhere where they're, where they're looking at it to get a feedback from them on what the, what the, um, population thinks of it, what, what the pluses and minus, what comments they're hearing from it. At the time that email was written, that the, the, the regulations hadn't been adopted yet. Um, at the time that email was written, that the, the, the regulations hadn't been adopted yet, so a few of those things have been tweaked a little bit. The affordability rates and, and stuff like that, so those will be things we'll have to go through, and they have, they have draft regulations, um, Serped is also working with towns to develop each town's bylaws, so they can be a, a, um, a useful tool in helping us as well. We talked to them through the Housing Production Plan Committee, they're the ones kinda running the show on that, um, so they, they could be a a good tool for us to use as well.
How are we doing with ADUs?
Like number of units, there are more coming in now, you, you're seeing, you're seeing a lot of like, um, in existing structure alterations, you're seeing variances needed for setbacks, you know, you get a smaller house that you're trying to do, and you, you know, they, they're asking for a relief from a twenty-foot setback to a fifteen, because obviously the house is there, so you're kinda stuck with, with what's going on, but we are seeing more, I don't know the number off the top of my head, I can, I can, I can see if, if, I don't know if the building department keeps track.
The one that I know of.
But there, but I do know there have been a lot more coming in.
I mean, the one that I know of is in Fairhaven, because it was someone that I know, Fairhaven actually convinced her not to do it separate, even though she has the property to do it, they convinced her to attach it to the existing house.
It's much cheaper that way.
Well, it was much cheaper when she would've had to go up thirteen feet, because she's at the beach.
That's what, yeah, nice, um, people looking at it as like a standalone unit. I think there was like sticker shock involved with people that thought, oh, this is a great idea.
It's not gonna be cheap.
I mean, you're looking at, I've seen prices well into the three hundred thousands, so, talk about people on septic. Like, at my house, if I was looking to do it, I'd have to upgrade my septic, I'd have to, I'd have to go get conservation approval, I'd have to, I'm in an aquifer. So I'd have to do, I'd have to do roof drains, which could be another fifteen, twenty thousand, so site work now adds to that cost. So the conversions, I think, are a little easier, but then the conversions are a little bit different from doing like an in-law apartment as opposed to an ADU, because you need two forms of regress, which the stipulations in the building code are different for an in-law compared to an ADU, so there's obstacles, but people are, like I said, I think, starting to see it a little bit more.
But Dan, New Bedford has, has done a lot of these with the old schools, Saint Mary's Home, Offage. Yeah, they've made apartments, uh, there's two, two developers that I, I don't know, but I, I've read about that are doing these, like, I think one of them is Cruz, and they are just gung ho on converting these schools and.
Yeah, some, it's something that we, obviously, we would need zoning changes to make that an option, but, again, what, what buildings do we have that?
No, we don't, we, we don't have any buildings here, except one that I could think of, and I won't mention it because I'd get in big trouble, but, um.
Nobody wants to talk about the old police station?
Nobody wants to talk about the old police station.
Unfortunately, that would take a zoning change.
Has everybody seen the map that these two gentlemen marked up with vacancies or available acreage, has everybody seen it?
No.
This, why don't we get up and just, you wanna just point it out a little bit for a minute?
The little one.
Well.
The little one just wanted.
I went over some maps, I don't know if it was.
Little one's old, the little one's two, that's two thousand sixteen.
Yeah, that's two thousand sixteen.
Yeah, Margaret, these, you've seen these plans.
I did, yeah.
Vacant lots?
Yeah.
In, in, in the areas we're talking about.
Yeah, the lands are available to build on.
So like, for instance, right here, he's saying seventeen and a half acres, half of it is vacant, when you say that.
That's like the old Toys R Us, which is now Ocean State Jaw, well, only half of that ever got built.
Right.
So there's the option there for, for additional development.
Yeah, on the, uh, north side.
Yep.
You know, close to forty acres vacant behind Walmart, go, go northwest.
Again, if you look at, if you look at.
Is it?
Under agreement.
Okay. Hey, you should've looked happier.
No, it wasn't by me.
So, so the purple's general business, like I talked about, you see how close to the general business to the yellow, which is the general residence. Are there many lots in there that could, that could do it? No, probably not, but if it helps with a few to get a, some, some housing units in there, like, like I said, lots that you wouldn't think had much development options. It's something to think about.
Where the Christmas tree shop was, do you have a vacant lot there?
Um, did we put like a redevelopment on that one, Ross, do you remember?
Did you, because there's a.
That PR means potential redevelopment.
Because there is a, there is a lot that's never been built on, in between the, in between two, the two buildings.
Okay.
In between, you're talking about in between Christmas tree shop and Lowe's, that open space?
That was, that was, it, it should show on the map that it's been approved to build something there.
And what you're seeing for the green that kinda shades things different, that's the aquifer, so you can see what we're talking about from crossroad to here. This, this is all aquifer.
So what, what would, forgive me for asking this, because you guys have answered it a dozen times, just differently. I know it doesn't have to be contiguous, but does the why, wherever it exists, have to have four boundaries?
Yes, it needs to be shown on a plan, like, like that one that I passed around earlier? That plan was the, the other, the other pamphlet right next to it, that back sheet was what got submitted with, this is, this is right from the town meeting warrant. This wasn't, this was the article, and it included that map, obviously, it's.
Yeah.
Photocopied, but you can basically see where that is for Route Six.
Wouldn't we also have the incentives, and it doesn't have to be today?
Hold, do, here.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Wouldn't we have the incentive, again, not even for something for today, but short and long term, to take properties that older properties, less developed properties, forgotten properties, and a why, give the opportunity to redevelop them into something more modern that can still fit the usage.
Right.
Have some, have, have more residential options, and it might be, make it more appetizing for somebody to come in there and do something more constructive.
Again, some of these lots that don't look like you could do much from a commercial standpoint at ten percent lot coverage, maybe, uh, maybe a mixed use would allow that.
Correct. With an engineered approach to solving an aquifer issue.
Correct. Like, all of Lincoln Park, which is all over here, you can do, I think, fifty percent lot coverage, which is in the aquifer, the overlay allowed for an additional increase in the percent lot coverage. Correct.
That's right.
Forty, forty why was kinda like a extension of the forty hours. Forty hours kinda worked, kinda had some problems, and this town's kinda had some problems, so the forty why was like, let's see what worked here and didn't work, and.
Yeah.
Let's give another option.
And because that forty hours never been built to, um, capacity.
All this is still vacant out here.
All the, um, where they're supposed to put the retail.
Right. That was, the purpose of the forty hours kinda almost be like a standalone community where you could walk to the bank, walk to a restaurant, walk to a grocery store.
Like they have across the country.
Yeah.
Kinda like the villages you were talking about.
They have other places.
It's like I said, it's amazing, you go, you go to different parts of the country, you have your residential, and every little commercial area has like the same restaurants, the same grocery stores, the same, they just make it work.
Little daycares and little religious, you know?
It's amazing.
Yeah, well.
This state just does not.
No, the comprehensive permit, that we're trying to get through in Tiverton, I am involved in this, they've got a dogged daycare. They've got childcare, and they had one other thing, but.
That's what you're seeing, you're seeing dog parks in most of these developments, so you're seeing open space used for different things.
Because people today, they want that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, and, you know, that, that was gonna be, that was gonna be two hundred and forty single-family homes. And they changed it to apartments, okay?
And like I said, a lot of what Ross and I have done has been, you know, basic level research, waiting to see which direction the board wants to go. Once we have more defined paths, obviously, we can then delve a little deeper and get the board more information on whatever paths the board decides to go.
I, I, I have a question that might come to me or any of us from a public, the public's perspective. The forty why is in place right now.
Yep.
But it's not in place anywhere in our town yet, right?
Correct.
So we, we will need, we will need, uh, a simple majority if we go down this route.
At town meeting, yes.
Because of the sentiment in the town right now, as it relates to forty A, B, C, D, E, F, and G.
Right.
Facetiously accurate.
It's always been zero.
How, how much of an effort do we make, and do we, you know, like, how do we determine when is enough, enough? Because going by the fact that it's a matter of right and it's mass general law and all that, and I wouldn't wanna go with my sails full of wind, because simple majority is simple majority, but it's, it's still a sore subject.
Oh, it's gonna be an uphill battle.
Sore subject.
If, if we're trying to, I wanna say rush, but if we're trying to get this on a next spring town meeting, I don't think there's.
Especially now.
Right, I think there's something that we gotta really plan out, really let it breathe, really have good outreach.
So when is this theoretically, the following spring or the fall, either way at a minimum?
Kinda depends on what goes on with the three projects.
But, but, but we can have outreach, we can have different things that go on, we can have surveys done, we can have, we can have a public hearing on this and invite people, and we can invite people that we've discussed about to ask them, what do you think about this stuff?
Yeah.
So we don't have to wait until we're ready to go, we can have this.
Start the process of educating.
And then, and then make, and then make the educated decision on when we actually wanna present it to town meeting.
We have three, we have three buildings that we could go to, and I think especially one of them would be very important. You've got the two libraries, which you could have a holder meeting in, you've got the senior center.
Of course, they, they have.
And seniors vote.
Yep.
Yeah.
And you can have, they have a, a, a meeting room.
And if you look at the age groups in there and you look at the things that run, it seems like there's support for these kind of
Yeah.
Options.
What about the other, the other boards in town, shouldn't we, uh, ask them first?
Well, as part, as part of the questions, obviously, the select board will, will, will be interested, and I've had conversations with different thoughts we've had with the town administrator.
Yeah.
He's kept the board appraised, um, so if and when we wanna take that next level, we, obviously, we wanna get them involved.
I have a question, if the, if the town rejects a forty B, they can go to the state.
Yes.
And the state can approve it, been there, done that, I know about it.
Yes.
Forty why? Can they go to the state, or is this strictly giving the power to the communities?
Yes, this will, this will be the local initiative, forty why.
As long as you comply with it.
It'll be the same as forty why.
Be the same.
We'll, we'll, we'll set the parameters as opposed to going to a, what's it called, the plan approval authority that's supposed to do the forty why's?
Yep.
We decide whether it's through special permit, through planning department, or whatever else we need.
Right.
So when we act, i- if, if we did decide this is the way we wanna go. We submit a, um, a letter outlining what we wanna do to the executive office of housing inlivable communities, outlining what they wanna do, they give us the blessing, yes, this is a great idea, pursue it. We do the whole thing, and then they approve it once it's finalized, so the state is involved, because there's also incentives like the forty why. So when we create the district, the town gets money, and for each unit sold in the district, the town gets money. So that helps defer the cost of infrastructure, schools, and other things.
Well, that was how the forty why was supposed to work, too.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, but this, this is a little different, I think this is a little different, uh, than the forty why law.
The forty why was supposed to get.
Yeah.
Well, I don't mean money, I just think the perception, okay?
Oh.
I think the perception's gonna be different than the forty why.
We actually didn't have a problem with the forty why.
No.
Half of, half of the units have to be at least three bedrooms.
Have to be at least three.
So you could, so if you had twenty units, you could have ten two bedrooms and ten three bedrooms.
Okay.
Or five, five one bedrooms, five twos and ten threes, yeah, yeah. So, again, this is me asking a question, Nick, I don't understand. You're telling me it's a matter of mass general law today, I can look it up, it's a forty why, but it's not available yet in the town of Dartmouth?
Correct, we, we have to, we have to, we have to create.
A zone.
Our, 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 our regulations, that'll have to, that'll have to be an article on the warrant for town meeting, presented to the town meeting, voted on by town meeting, after we get the initial approval from the EO HLC.
Yeah, so my follow-up question is, are we, are we obligated, because it's mass general law, to do it within a certain amount of time? Does the state?
We don't have to do it ever. We're not required to do it.
The regulations just give towns the option to have an overlay.
They're looking for more housing options.
Yeah, it's a prepackaged, we've done the thinking for you.
Yeah, yes.
Here it is.
We, 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 yes, we're, we're, we're looking, there's also, there's a video, you can go, go on, on the town's forty why website, and they have somebody that gives a little presentation on it, um.
What town?
Uh, the state, it's like a webinar.
So if you, so if you go to mass.gov and then you do the forty why, there's a, there's a, a link for.
Oh, good.
So, is that on it? I'm looking for it, I know, this is where, I'm at the statue, so the PDF, HTML.
There was, there was a video.
Once.
Scroll down again.
We, let's say we create a zone.
Recorded webinar.
Where are you?
Right in the middle.
Somebody buys property inside the zone.
Yep.
Completely by right?
Well, they'd have to still, the, I believe the planning board can set up like standards within the overlay that say it was special permit or site plan review, they'd have to come do that and make sure that they comply. Almost like how we have our regs via Article twenty-four.
Okay.
So we could do things like that, I believe.
But basically, all you're doing is a developer would come in and say, I'm compliant, here's, here's my plans.
Yep.
They are compliant.
Yep.
Disagree or that. It's essentially by right.
Yeah. Yeah, similar, almost like how Article twenty-four, it's almost just making sure that they check all the boxes as a, as a way to, to ensure that it's not something that the, the town doesn't want. So the, the, the overlay would allow for the planning board to, well, at first, the, the buy, the overlay would allow for developers to do it, period, because a lot of the stuff is not typically allowed via the zoning, at least of Dartmouth right now, and then on top of that, it would allow the planning board to have a, a chance to view the project almost via special permit or site plan review.
Okay.
Similar to that, does that make sense?
Yeah.
So, so, so it's in the books under mass general law.
It does.
The, the draft regulations are still kind of a work in progress, so we don't wanna
Jump the gun.
Jump the gun like we did for the ADUs.
Right.
Because the ADUs, they gave us a baseline and then changed a few things.
Right, yeah.
So we kinda, we, like I said, it's not something I, I don't think we wanna rush into making a decision, but I think it kinda checks a lot of the boxes from our survey we did, from our, from our goals of the master plan, from a lot of items we've discussed, and I'm not saying this is the only tool. Like, we talked about inclusionary zoning, for example, our old fifty-five special permits we do. Something simple, some simple we could do for that is say, ten percent of all units in a fifty-five development shall be deemed affordable per eighty percent of the, of the AMI.
And that keeps us, keeping a, a.
Rather than, you know, like, like, for, for a recent one that came in, it was a substantial size, eighty-nine units. That eighty-nine units goes into the overall housing stock, but puts us further away from the ten percent. So if we did ten percent of those, we're kinda keeping status quo.
Along those lines, there was an email that I think you guys sent out, that raised the concept that project like the three that are being contemplated now, the forty B projects, that all of the units would count.
Apartments.
Yeah, the apartments.
As long as they're uniform, so you can't have like one building that's has affordable units, another building that's strictly market rate, it has to be equal distribution. You can't, you can't be like standalone.
Have to be blended.
Yes, it has to, they all have to look like they're all part of the same.
Until you open the door.
Until you open the door.
So eh, but that decision is made by the developer, not us.
If they're doing all apartments, yes, but two of the forty Bs are all apartments.
But.
As of right now, they're not approved, obviously.
But in order to qualify for forty B, are you saying that they all have to be blended?
Yes.
Yes, you can.
In or, in order to be qualified, that all of the apartments count towards the subsidized housing inventory.
They have to be blended.
Because that's what we want.
That's what we should want, if somebody is gonna do a forty B, that helps us get there a lot quicker.
Yes.
Or, to the contrary, without that, we'll never get there.
Yeah.
But the numbers just do not allow.
Without using that tool, you'll never get there.
Never get there. That's why it would be good to have.
Unless we, unless we took a certain parcel and made them all. Unless we, unless we took a certain parcel and made them all affordable units through grant funding and other things.
Yeah.
So you took a two-hundred unit development that was, that was funded entirely. And now all two-hundred of those units count. Other than that, it's an uphill battle.
And the, like, to summarize that is key. Each of us, to be able to summarize that to our friends and our neighbors. And to those who maybe think differently of our actions here at the board or what our goals are. Or maybe you're unaware of what our obstacles are, th- those are our obstacles. It's real. It adds up, not in our favor, except for that unique situation where if we picked up the total count.
And what happens is we'll be forced to have a forty B in the future.
What was the question?
Have we had a development that is all forty Bs?
Where we counted all the units, where we've been able to count all the units, no, not in recent history, right?
The one on.
The apartments on France Connor Road.
Off of France Connor Road, um, I can't remember the name. Ledgemont.
Well, Ledgemont is.
I don't know about all of them.
I didn't think it was all of them.
I've been trying to get a list of what counts in it.
Yeah, I didn't think it was.
Cause there's ex- there's, there's buildings on separate parcels in there.
Right.
So I haven't been able to get a good grasp on the numbers and the building permits don't really show numbers really well. But I believe the, whatever that first lot was, I believe all of those count towards the subsidized housing inventory.
I didn't think we had one in, in the town.
So if I built a house.
Again, I'm working on that.
Yeah.
If I had a cheap parcel and I built a cheap house, inexpensive, I shouldn't say cheap. If I had an inexpensive parcel and I built an inexpensive house on that. Even though there's no deed restriction on future sales. Would that count?
No, which is why the ADUs don't count. None of the ADUs count towards it.
Right.
ADUs were set up to be affordable housing and they don't count towards the subsidized housing inventory. Unless somebody did all that work, the deed restricted and everything else and request for it to be put on the, the SHI.
No one's doing that.
So it could be affordable, I could have built something that is by definition affordable.
Yep.
But it will not count towards the number.
Correct.
Because there is no deed restriction.
There is no restriction that limits it to eighty percent or fifty percent, there's different thresholds, but.
Well, if you built it five years ago and it, let's say, you built it five years ago and you sold it for three hundred or two fifty. Today that house is worth five, five fifty. So it's not affordable.
I have.
It's, it's crazy, I mean, I'm fifty one, my first house was a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Oh, I won't tell you what I paid for mine then. You bought a house in seventy-seven, paid thirty-two thousand.
Yeah.
It's now worth boom.
Yeah.
Well, well, that's.
You better keep your receipts.
Actually, we have everything.
That's what some people say to me, a- and they don't understand, you know, they'll say, well, you, you, you bought a house, Margaret, what did you pay? And I said, well, let's say my first house, I paid twenty-nine thousand, but I was making a dollar ten an hour.
Yeah.
I always, I always feel bad when I tell Ross what I paid for my first house.
Okay, so today, you know, that house probably worth six hundred thousand.
Sure.
And maybe the person's making fifteen dollars an hour.
Or even much more, because starter jobs today are paying in the twenties.
Eighteen, eighteen, twenty, yeah.
Right, so they're making twenty times, nineteen and a half times what you made.
Yeah.
What's that?
What?
I think, is, is it minimum wage nineteen now?
No.
No, not yet, not yet.
I don't know, I know it's in the teens.
Fifteen?
Did they pass it or the, it's fifteen?
It's fifteen today.
They, they haven't passed it.
It's gonna be graduated.
No, they haven't passed it yet.
Where it is.
So it.
Of what the units were that.
I sit on a different board.
There's a bill to do that.
Oh, here it is, right here.
We've been following.
Yes.
Minimum wage.
And it, it, that, that's, chat was duh, 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 up to fifteen, now it's stopped.
So that's ledger.
Now there's another bill in there to say they wanna make it to twenty. And it would be like a whole year till it reaches twenty.
We could park one, it's thirty-six.
That's why people are complaining because like the kids that work at McDonald's and stuff. You know, you hire a sixteen-year-old kid and you're gonna pay him twenty dollars an hour.
I mean, if, I mean.
McDonald's is up there now.
I know, yeah.
Why would it expire?
Cause you put.
Ross.
Yes.
I could ask another question, cause I'm, I really wanna grasp.
Yep.
Get my, my head around this topic.
Yep.
I understand how we're defining affordable.
Yes.
In terms of the income, are we talking about just Dartmouth residents? Are we talking about county or are we?
Area median income.
Area median.
Area, what, what, what's the area?
Some version of Greater New Bedford.
It kinda takes. Neighboring towns?
Kind of greater New Bedford, I don't know what's included.
It's a circle, it's a circle, okay? It's like it's a stats and it goes out five miles, ten miles, fifteen miles, okay? And that defines the affordable, whatever circle we're in, all right.
Oh, sorry.
So the state figures that out for us.
Yeah. The, the area for affordable ability is bigger than just New Bedford.
Yes, yeah, that's what I just said.
Yeah, but it's even bigger than that.
Yeah.
Well, that's what we use, that's what we use for our.
East, it's gotta go west too, right?
At one point, it included all the way up to Boston.
Yeah.
And there was a big fight over that and the change, they got changed.
Changed, yeah.
Cause there was a big.
I, I, I have the website linked on my, on my computer, so I could get you that information.
I'm just.
I was curious too, that's why.
I wanna buy in, I wanna buy into the whole idea and, and, and it.
Yeah, the only number that really sticks out in my head is was like a family of four was like ninety-five, ninety-six thousand was the income.
They weren't done in paternity.
Number stuck out in my head, cause you figure that's.
So it's by household.
Small family, household. So if you have a family of four, it was like right around like ninety-five, ninety-six thousand was the eighty. Was, was the average, which, that was the average median income. And then to be, for fours, you gotta make eighty percent of that.
You look at the income in New Bedford, medium income in New Bedford versus the median income in Dartmouth.
Oh, it's two different.
Night and day.
I'm always amazed with at the average median incomes and can't believe how low they are just based on how they figure them out.
Really quick to get to your, to your question. It says here, to find the median income for an area, you have to visit the US Census Bureau's data.sensus.gov website. And it will use filters for geography and topics to search for median household data income in the American Community Survey. The ACS, and it goes on to explain, so there's a federal path to determining this.
It might be on either the, I, I forget, I have a, I have a, it's either on like the EO HLC website, mass housing website. It's, I, I have a link that I can get to.
I wanna share this.
Connie's stuff is, most of his stuff has gone back to, um, market, market rate. Not every single one of them, but that was the way the town accepted him. He would only keep it affordable up until this year and the town accepted that.
Well, Crossroads, remember he, he extended it? That was on the ZBA.
I'm talking about Solima.
No, I know, but Crossroads was supposed to and pet, you know, and, you know, was he part of that? I think so.
Crossroads was Claremont.
Yeah, he, he extended that one because, uh, after, that was a twenty-year one, I think.
I know there are people still in there that are, um, affordable, because once you go in, you're there.
You're there, it's like rent control, it's the same thing.
It is like rent.
Kevin, I, I wanted to make this point, um, th- this is a gr- a chart that shows projects, number of units that went affordable. How many remain affordable, but a key note here is that some of them do expire depending on how it's drafted. So there's another complexity to us chasing numbers. You know, y- you gain some traction, but yet there's a date out in the future that's gonna take X amount of units off the block, so.
We don't accept them as that.
Which I think we, that we need to have some kind of inclusionary zoning.
I think inclusionary zoning is excellent.
It's gonna have to be done.
Yeah, and there's different mechanisms we can do.
Yeah, and I like the idea of.
It doesn't all have to be at once. You don't wanna, you don't wanna throw too much at town meeting either.
Didn't, um, was it Middleborough or Dayton who put a moratorium on building not too long ago?
No, the state won't approve those.
I think they did, I thought they put a, a moratorium on, on.
Because I forgot what community tried to do it when I was on the board and the state.
Maybe it, that's what it was, maybe it was.
State slammed right down on it and said, you can't prevent building.
The, the, the state right now, I had sent you guys months back, her, uh, Governor Healy's study that she had done. And she wants, what was it, two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand new houses by twenty thirty-five?
She's absolutely batty. I'm sorry.
You're saying that on public television?
How are you gonna do that?
But that's the, I'm just saying that that's the overall view from a state level.
And who's.
They, they have a drastic need for housing.
What they want, too.
You look at our state numbers, job growth is.
You can't.
Well, she's.
The only number one in the, the, the worst category.
What's that?
She doesn't wanna be number one and she is.
She is, that's right.
We are.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Together.
This, this here says that in the event to prevent overdevelopment or, um, the overuse of, uh, resource over utilization. Moratoriums have been put on building housing.
They have.
Because of those two reasons.
I think, I think they have, um, yes, they have.
Really? Yeah. Cause I remember the town tried to do, talked about doing it.
I, I would be, and this, and this state of the state, I would be curious to see how that would hold.
This was, this was either Dayton, Berkeley or Middleborough, and this was like ten or fifteen years ago.
Oh, this, what I'm picking up was before that.
I mean, I, I mean, I've been with towns, you know, they don't have to necessarily call it a moratorium, but.
They can call it something else.
You know, you can't get a perk test for six months, well, what's that gonna do?
Right.
It's gonna stop, you know, so there's, there's different things that, that towns do to slow things down.
It's gonna be interesting, uh, with these forty Bs now and all the apartments, the luxury apartments, all the, uh, with our sewer. It's gonna be very interesting.
It's an, it's an, it's an important. Key component to development in general in town. It's something that's gonna, it's gonna be a big item for discussion on any, any project going forward of any, of any size.
My understanding that if you could say, hey, wait, we don't have the sewer, the answer is figure it out.
That seems to be the answer we're getting so far, I would agree with you on that.
I mean, if they have the, the soils and the capacity, they'll just put in a septic system. They have the capacity and the soils is what I'm saying. You know, they, they, they can, the Buddha Health can say, yeah, you can put it in, they can build.
But they're responsible for it.
Oh, yeah.
And that developer's responsible for it.
Developer would much rather have a, have a pig go out into the road and forget about it.
Perpetuity is obligation.
Yeah, then, then, then you, then you have common.
Because they are responsible.
Common septic systems, they have to be very well maintained by homeowners association and.
We all know how that goes.
A lot of times people think, once it goes down the pipe, you don't have to worry about it anymore.
So they, they, so they go ahead and get it, they do it because they got the capability to do it. And ten years down the road, they hook up the town sewer, because the town sewer down.
If it's available.
You know, now it's.
It's a huge benefit to this town that we do have sewer as much of the area we do, that's a huge plus for us. But we gotta be smart about it too.
Yeah.
And I know it's a lot of ongoing items on long-term goals. From what are we gonna do next week? So it's, it's, it's on the radar on pretty much everybody's items for discussion for any project.
Our water, our sewer and our schools.
Where do we go from here? Do we want to?
Do I wanna set up another one of these in a month or two?
Yeah, I think, I think two, we lose traction, I think a month is reasonable, right? It's not a lot to ask for, four weeks from now, we kinda pick up where we left off. Between now and then, I think some small goals would be, um, jump on the mass.gov website. Put in forty Y, Google forty, if you Google forty Y.
Yep.
Plus sign Massachusetts, it'll bring you to the mass.gov site. There's not only a great explanation and definitions, but there's also a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation you can scroll through. Which has proven to be helpful just tonight scrolling through it. But there's probably a difference between what's here and then the CMR that you guys have, right?
Which, which, which is, that part is still a draft regulation.
But do you want to, if that hasn't come to us via email, do you wanna get that?
Sure.
Via email to us?
Yeah.
Cause I think it's just important that we're all referencing the same materials. So between the website, big picture, and then the CMR from these guys, which are current drafts, uh, will bring us up to speed.
Which, again, they had planned on having the next, I don't know if it was final or the next set by fall. So we're just getting into fall, so.
It's fine.
There'll be new regulations coming up.
I mean.
Probably I send you out, there'll be new ones like two weeks later.
Yeah, but it's.
But I'll get you those as well.
Better to learn the two amendments two weeks later than to learn seventeen pages.
You might, you might see why.
I, I like the forty Y, I really like it.
Yeah, I do too.
It's, it's likely a solution with the least amount, there's gonna be opposition no matter what.
There always is.
But it just might be the least amount of opposition.
You can't please everybody, Nick.
With the low threshold of passage.
No.
And again, I would just, I would just put out there, I know we didn't do it today, but if any board members do have the time to come by. We can start penciling in areas, we think, like I said, everybody does a color and then we kinda see what. Next time we get together, we can put them out here and see what people agree on.
Sure, yeah.
You know what would be an interesting overlay, and I don't, like, I'm not, I really don't wanna just create work. It would be interesting for me to see what the mass transit, meaning bus routes are. Is that, is Serta the only bus route in our town?
It's the only one I know of.
Yes, Serta.
Okay, so basic, the, you know what?
I'll try to get a Serta bus map.
I don't think you have to do any work.
I've seen it before.
Yeah, me too.
Go on the Serta website.
Just go on the Serta website.
And add the stops in the different lines, line nine, line ten.
Yeah. I know they stop all over the place on, along Route Six.
And France Connor Road.
Connor Road.
Yep.
Because when I was selling, um, Hawthorne, that was the big question and I had to call them.
The bus, yeah. The bus, the bus, yeah.
And I had to find out if they would go there, and they would.
They do.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, they're, they're at Hawthorne, they go all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah. Again, this is where, you know, you don't need a car, you can get on a bus.
Right.
And, you know, I mean, and the, I believe the same one that does the Route six and all of that goes to the bus station off of, um, what is that, Kings Highway?
Oh, does it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Don't hold me to it, but I, someone was telling me the other day.
The commuter bus to Boston?
No, to the train.
Oh, to the train.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, now they're gonna be flying out of, uh, New Bedford to Boston.
And now I grew a flight today.
Did you?
No, Ian was on it.
I know, I heard.
Yeah.
I didn't hear how much it's gonna cost though, did you?
Thought it was a hundred and change.
Yeah, one way.
Flight to where?
Boston.
Cape, Cape Air to Boston, two flights a day.
Yep, getting our flights back.
To Logan, so if you kinda connect, catch a flight in the afternoon, you can take a New Bedford flight and avoid the train, avoid the traffic.
Right.
Now, I'm old enough to remember when there was an airplane called the Yellow Bird.
Oh, yeah.
That flew from New Bedford and Boston back and forth, because I took it to Boston to catch the plane to Bermuda.
Oh, yeah, that was a while ago.
Yeah.
It's a hopeful endeavor, but it's, it's nice to know.
So is that for a round trip, a hundred and twenty-five round trip?
I'm not sure.
You're not sure, okay.
I just, I just heard a hundred, yeah, not sure.
Yeah.
Cause I was cur, because if you, if you, if you go to Logan, which I, I used to go to Logan a lot, fly to Colorado, by the time you pay your car that you've parked there, it's three hundred bucks.
Oh, yeah, even, even, even in long t, even in long-term parking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Three hundred dollars, okay?
Providence, Lot E.
Oh, I love, I love Providence.
You buy the ticket in advance?
And it used to be Providence, it used to be Providence was much cheaper flights and now it's, it's.
You buy a ticket, I didn't know.
Boston's cheaper.
You know, you, you used to be able to fly from New Bedford to New York too.
So you go.
Because, um, before we totally moved back here, I moved back and my husband was flying back home every other weekend from New York to Boston.
Where the, you go.
You back to Boston.
And the back.
One thing I just mentioned before we close up, the Housing Production Plan Committee is getting their goals together and they like recommendation for a couple from the planning board.
The Housing Production Plan?
They would like a couple of goals.
Friday morning.
So one of them could be a overlay district, potential overlay district, I mean, it.
I showed up just before four o'clock.
To the board, another one could be inclusionary zoning.
Wife and one of my daughters.
The previous goals were.
And there's two shuttles waiting for us.
Wow, that's great.
So we park and.
Yeah.
Continuing sport for elderly and affordable housing options. Opportunities in low to medium density sex, settings consistent with the character of the town. And goal two was continue to identify zoning alternatives for residential developments that preserve the town's character and protect its natural resources.
So go with the forty Y, like you said, inclusionary.
We could say, we could say forty Y, we could say whatever you guys want, we just wanna get a couple of goals.
He's looking for recommendations to the, um.
Housing Production Plan.
Housing Production Plan, so.
Cause we're hoping to have that done by the end of the year, which will, which will be another big tool, which I think the gentleman that came to spoke to us recommended, wait until that was in effect.
Right, yeah.
Well, maybe we can put that on the agenda for next week.
When do they need it from?
Yes, make an agenda item, the Housing Production Recommendation.
Oh, to do the recommendations?
Yeah, or not.
When's the next meeting?
We don't have a date yet, they were waiting for us.
Yeah, they're waiting for us, oh.
Waiting for us.
The Housing Production.
So we don't have, we don't have a meeting next week?
No, we do, we can probably wait till after that August, October sixth. You want, you want me to put it as a line for it, so everybody can kinda think about it a little bit? And then come up with it, we can, even if we give them a couple.
Yeah.
Alright, let's do that.
You were saying maybe a month out for the next personal one?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you don't mind, make sure that we all get the CMR that you guys have, even though it's in progress.
Got, I got it. Not a problem.
Yep.
Not a problem.
So what date are we looking at, a month out?
Well, we have meetings on November third and November seventeenth, and then we got, so November tenth, we got Thanksgiving, obviously the week after that.
So wait, what about October? October sixth, we have a meeting, right?
And October twentieth.
Okay, planned, and October twentieth, planned.
Sixth and twentieth.
So a month would actually be October twenty-seventh, cause today, well, today's the twenty-ninth, whatever.
Anybody got a calendar that shows holidays?
Holidays, Veterans Day is the eleventh, that I have.